It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One for one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates get heated right or wrong, they paint the town with visions bold. Who will ride to a fold? Shadows linger truthless, then the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Who, who, we'll see. Promises flying, hearts ignite. Truth and lies will take a night. The clock is ticking, make your choice. Will you hear the people's voice? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny, who will wear the crown in 2025, we'll see. Words are weapons, wielded strong debates get heated right or wrong, they paint the town with visions bold. Who will ride to a fold? Shadows linger truthless, then the battle rages from within. One by one, they state their case, but only one can win this race. Who will lead this, win this race? It's in the ballot, it's in your hand, the future's calling, take a stand. One vote, one dream, one destiny.
Today, we're having the Hamilton West Ward of Hamilton City Council, part one. These are your candidate and inked seats who are here today, here standing, who will be vying to become one of the next six councillors for Hamilton City Council. But we'll have reelection, there's one thing always sticking in all candidates' ways, and that's your vote. Okay, so let's get ready for the Hamilton West Ward first round of questions. We've got Dave here, who is in studio, and we do have, was it Matthew, who has given us some videos because he has a funeral to go to, so he's done some videos to put on his place. Because sometimes, when you can't make it in person, and you organise, you can always put a video in its place. So Dave, would you like to kick off with, you know, be standing away, you should be receiving one of those six tips?
Well, I show up for one, that's usually a good sign. Kia ora, I am Dave Taylor, I am a first-time candidate for the Hamilton West Ward. Hamilton-born and raised, went to Melville High School, Waikato University. I have been a renter and a ratepayer on both sides of the river. Today, I'm a writer and organisational strategist, which means I get to work with people who are really passionate about what they do, and who want to make the world a better place. I'm actually quite excited about the future of the council, because I see that passion coming through with some of the candidates, who want to drive for meaningful change, who are fighting for an A-plus city. There's a lot of talk about going back to basics. Well, I don't want a basic city, I don't want a Cs get degrees city, I want an A-plus city, and I think that's what we deserve. So, in terms of fighting for our city, in terms of protecting our communities and our services, making sure that there are opportunities for everyone, driving for meaningful change, that is what I'm standing for. It is up to all of us to choose the council and the candidates that we feel are going to take our city where it needs to go. A vote for Dave Taylor is a vote for that, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, we'll get to our first one here from Matthew of Opening Statements. Now just please bear with me on how to make this all work. It's always a lot of fun when you're literally trying to work out exactly how to make everything all work on the fly, but we'll make this happen.
Kia ora, my name's Matthew Beveridge and I'm running for Hamilton West. Thank you for having me here today remotely. Unfortunately, I'm not able to make it because I'm in Christchurch for a family funeral. The council needs to take a longer-term view to the decisions that it makes. Over the last 35 years, as Treasury has said, it's made a number of decisions which have been very short-term focused and has put us into the position that we're in. I am looking to bring evidence-based decision-making in a long-term view to how council makes decisions. And part of this is, I'm a big proponent of participatory and deliberative democracy, which are tools that allow individuals and communities to have a much greater say in decision-making and offer the opportunity for really well-informed decisions to be made that meet the needs of all community members. Thank you for that, thank you for having me, and my name is Matthew Beveridge for Hamilton West.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, now let's get to the box around the questions. Now, because we've only got one candidate here, we're not going to have any bottoms or defers, because I mean, who gets to defer it to your candidates who have chosen not to come?
Yes, here to the session in a couple of hours' time, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll see who the rest is, sits there and comes on there. So, between box number one and 28, what was the first box number you'd like to pick?
Oh, I actually get to choose which number?
Oh yes, but there's no correspondence to the questions there, no correspondence to which order they're in. So it's still a bit lucky, Dave.
Okay, 17.
17. So let's see what comes up first with 17. We got V for violin. Oh, now where the hell do I have the cards on here? Now, so that's, see, I'm doing a few jobs at once here because we're doing phones on a budget here. Sometimes we have someone doing four jobs when they should be doing one. When was the last time you used public transport or a cycle lane in Hamilton?
That's a very easy question, it's a good one. Last time I used a cycle lane would have been, well, as far as a cycle lane goes, from Norton to the CBD on Saturday, in terms of a cycle path, it would be the Western Rail Trail towards Melville, also on Saturday. So that's the short answer for that one. In terms of public transport, I hope you count Tahuia as public transport. I was up there a couple of weeks ago for some business meetings to go to Auckland and made a day of it. So, I'm a big proponent of public transport, I think it's necessary, I think it's good to have options as to how we get around, and we need to support those.
Okay, what's the next box number you'd like to pick?
Eight.
Eight. Okay, we've got I for igloo. Better put that one back on me. No, no, I don't want J, I want I. How, no, how would you approach constant central government changes? E.g. RMA, density rules, building code, when making local decisions?
Big question. It can be very frustrating, the rate of change that the rules coming through from central government, particularly, as I say, of RMA code updates. Central government removed its co-funding for things like footpath maintenance, which means now the Hamilton Council has to pick up the full bill of that, which is very, very frustrating. We don't get to opt out of those rules though, which is equally frustrating. But what we do have to do is roll up our sleeves and get to work and actually go about making sure that we're doing the right thing for the people in the city, whatever that might look like. Protecting our communities, protecting our long-term vision. The solution, in my mind, is that it's better communication and actually getting in front of people and saying, "Look, this is what has changed on us, here's how we need to do things differently, here's why we need to do it differently, how can you be involved?", is the other part of that. I think getting communities involved so that they understand and that they can be part of shaping the cities.
No problem, okay, what's the next box number?
One.
One, okay. We've got R for Romeo.
It's quite nice, this is sort of an open book in some ways.
Some ways, yeah, in some ways, it's open, but god, god, I remember having that from being told at college, my mum absolutely hated, was it Open Book Assessments, not understanding the preference behind it. So we've got R for Romeo. What impression would you like first-time visitors to Hamilton to leave with?
I would love, I would love them to love the city as much as we do. I want them to feel like it's alive and it's vibrant and it's thriving. I want them to be already planning their next visit to the city after they see us. I want them to be, you know, they feel like the nightlife and the shops and the unique parts of the city are absolutely worth celebrating. Get them back for more, that's my hope. I want them to set up businesses here, put down roots, get their families involved and go like, "Yep, this is, this is a cool place, this is where it needs to be, this is where I can live."
Okay, what's the next box number?
Would you like to pick a box for me? Thank you.
Okay, we've got AA for double A batteries. How robust are council consultation processes with resonance and how could they improve?
The processes are there, but they can clearly be better, because many people feel like they're not being heard, they're not being listened to when it comes to issues, big and small, whether it's, you know, the right placement of something like a speed bump, or the right plants going in down the streets, and they are obviously having long-term effects for us. There is, there are the meetings, there are the online platforms, but they need to be more august. So I think ultimately, we need to be closing the loop, we need to be making sure that if there is a consulting session or a meeting, that there is a report that's written in plain language that comes out and goes to the people that were involved. And also that explains what the result of that meeting is, because it's very good to make a promise, but actually saying, "Well, this is what we're going to do differently." I'd like to see more pop-up sessions, I'd like to see councillors at cafes, at malls, as available of just, as justices of the peace are, so that you can chat to them 15, 15 minutes and be heard. I'd also like to see more activity towards young people, renters, Maori Pacifica, disabled communities, more active outreach, because they're often neglected when it comes to the feedback and sending in feedback. So, there's a few changes that we'd like to see.
Actually, I had a great example of that with the crossing across the road. The, was it person in the wheelchair, has gone across the road, knocked her leg off. Now I helped to get her leg back onto his footplate properly, but one of the interesting things is, if it didn't have to dip into the curb with gutters, that wouldn't have happened. But it's interesting, that little detail difference. Now, she said it was great, because I kind of had an idea what to do, because I'm also, my friend who's having me staying here is also in a wheelchair, so I kind of know the ins and outs of what do you do, what do you not do?
Yeah, that's very good of you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's amazing how like, you just watched her like literally intercross that, going over the gutter part of each of the crossings, go there, and it's like, whereas like a raised crossing, or just the gutter part raised, would make an absolute better crossing experience.
I, I, I hope one of the accessibility questions will come up. I know that there's one as part of the hard-hitting at the end.
You can thank Tony for that one.
Oh, good, good. Just on that, it does feel like the accessibility in the city is being, is being treated as a compliance issue, not a design issue. And I'll paraphrase Matthew, that did come from him, as he said in one meeting, that either you have accessibility issues now, or you will have accessibility issues in the future. And I think we're not doing enough to plan for an accessible city in many, many ways of that word, in many, many different times, terms. So, those sorts of things, where it absolutely does, you know, you bottom out over a gutter or you're trying to get across a road and you need that safety, you need that accessibility, we need to be doubling down on that for the good of everyone. Because I, I take my grandma to town in a wheelchair, you know, she's, she has a walker around the house, but going down the street just pushing her wheelchair is tough work, really, really tough work.
Probably not lucky enough to have an electric one.
No, no, it's manual, so I, that's, that's my duty as a chaperone, is to, is to push her around.
Yeah, okay.
Another number, please. Seven, lucky number seven.
Okay, we've got S for Syera. And where is it? Okay, what is the most underrated part of the Waikato that more people should know about?
The, I mean, I quite admire Sanctuary Mountain, Mangato Tere, because, oh yeah, there we go. Oh, good on you, the salt of the earth, we need more people like you. The, I think it's a stunning place, it's proof of what can happen when we all work together, when we do look at, you know, building up these beautiful native spaces, absolute godsend for our sense of identity and community. It is, it's definitely worth, worth making it a regular destination. I do want to also say though, I think that the river is underrated and it's also neglected. And I think we are, we are responsible for a small part of it, but we need to be ensuring that that part of it is improved before it leaves the cities, that people downstream of us aren't cleaning up our mess. I think we do, as others have said, we do turn our back on the city, our design is facing away from it. I would love the water to be good enough that we can have more water sports without fear of having to plan a trip to the doctor afterwards. As part of a long-term plan, there is, there are works to make it clearer and make it better for everyone to use. But I think it's a stunning, it's a stunning natural feature and we should be making the absolute most of it.
Okay, what's the next box?
Another box.
I just wanted to say, Dave, I was really happy that you got to talk about accessibility.
Oh, good.
Because I'm looking back at the disability sector. But the fact that what the wheelchair is crossing, that isn't that great. And there are a lot of people around here in automatic chairs, wheelchairs, but the big problem is, there's no limited speed zone signs out there. And people fly down there and these kids crossing the roads, and it's only a matter of time.
They're absolutely right. I, we may come on to this, I don't know if it will come up, but when I talk to people about accessibility, they want signalised crossings, because they are the, by far, the safest way of signalising, and then sort of signalling to drivers and to pedestrians and to people with wheels, walkers, chairs, whatever it might be, that, that's what we need to do. I think one of the challenges the council faces is that those are relatively expensive, so they tend to default to a cheaper option, because they can, you know, they can put down, I don't know, 10, 30 speed bumps instead of one signalised crossing. But signalised crossing is where we need to be going, long-term.
And it's a sign, you know?
True.
Yeah, oh good, oh good.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Anyone who helps people with disabilities or puts in their points, always funds up for me, because I, I mean, I'm not myself in that boat, but I have, I've dealt with so many different people in the air. So I've seen it from their lens as well. It's, yeah, and it's, I mean, it's part of the reason why I always like it there. Every It's in Belt show, my friend Tony has been one who's put us up every single time to sit there and do that. Like, he did ask about one of the hard-hitting questions, the one about disability. And that was like, "Yep, no, no, you've put, you've put me up." I'm sure we can do that in return. The last time for the Hamilton East one, it was about, what do you call it, accessible bus stops? Which, no, no, no concrete in the berm, which means that bus stop is now inaccessible. Little simple things like that, yeah. Okay, well, we've got the next one, we've got B for Bravo. Okay, what new revenue streams could council consider to reduce pressure on ratepayers?
We shouldn't be paying 15% of our rates to central government, we need to be clawing back that GST, because that's a massive amount of money that we can't do alone. That's going to be a big, actively concerted push from many councils in order to get that back. Likewise, actually, the government doesn't pay rates on property, properties it owns, I understand. So, we can be getting that, giving revenue from there. Targeted rates when they benefit the community. And there's been consultation, and where they're going to improve home value. I think that's important to consider. More partnership and funding with Iwi. Working with housing developers, because if they're going to be investing in the houses, then they also need to be investing in the infrastructure. Much beyond that, I've heard one of the councillors, one of the candidates, I should say, was talking about charging out of towners for use of all community services. Basically, if you had your library card, you got it for cheap or for free. And I thought, well, there's a risk of scaring off people from coming into the city, or they might be sort of turned away, so I'm not entirely sure, that's a good one. But there are lots of ideas, I'd like to hear some from the community, and I'd like to know what is going to make a meaningful difference.
Okay, the next box number?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, that's right, and that one's my birthday. If you want to celebrate it, one month to go.
My name is on the merril candidate list. I have chosen to spend the rest of my, my rest of the campaign focusing on the West Ward. But you can put a number next to me, there are some other good options, I will say. I'll happily take a number two, I will say that.
Okay, so now we have got H for hotel. How do you feel about inability to remove elected members who repeatedly bring the council into disrepute?
I want to look at, I want to look at my notes here, because I want to choose my words very carefully. And I think there's, there's two, here's a note, how close am I being kept to my one minute? Because I heard the bell go off.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not actually...
Not policing me?
No, no, I mean, you haven't got a bunch of other candidates here, so I'm, you know, it's kind of like, it's all staged.
I appreciate that, thank you. So, we know that, for instance, the Code of Conduct complaint last year. Now, the official figures put it at $24,000 at cost, but I have heard $40,000 once everything was tallied up, which is, you know, as a ratepayer, is not something that you want to be paying for. We have to be sure that complaints are treated seriously and that if a complaint is made against a councillor, that they are given a fair and just treatment. And I think that's what we have to negotiate, because we don't want a group getting together and then suddenly deciding that they want to vote out someone from any part of the political spectrum, democracy doesn't, you know, shouldn't work that way. I do support, I think it's the, it's the previous question, in terms of having an independent auditor to hold people to account and to make sure that any complaints are treated fairly. The truth has to, has to come first, and justice has to come first. Even if we don't particularly like the outcome or a candidate staying on board, we need a fair process to protect everyone. I'll finish there, I think.
I think that's a smart answer, and I, I've seen it where, in the case of Wellington, where I live, I've seen it being weaponised.
That's the concern.
Yeah, and that's the problem, you don't want someone to weaponise something, to attack an opponent potentially. It should be left for when you, right, rurally screw up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I, and I think we also need to be holding our elected officials to a very high standard. I think it's, there's, we should expect the best, we should expect dignity, and we should expect accountability, and if we don't have that, then, well, we have elections, but we also need, I think, an extra third party to come in and straighten the rudder.
Okay, next box number?
Three.
I like this.
Yeah, I'm getting the full run.
I know, I know. Okay, we've got M for Mike. Okay, and that's that one there. Oh, this feels a bit more like a fluff question. Who is your favourite local artist, visual, music, film, writing, et cetera, and why? And I think for you, that might, you might actually be the next good answer.
Well, I'd like to think so, because I'm involved in the creative scene, and I have been for 20 years, I would say. And for the last year, I've been on the board at the Meteor Theatre. So, my, my first answer has to be Cian Parker. She is the operations manager there as well, so I know this is a related question, I did want to give her a shout-out there as well if it comes up. But she is, I think, a fantastic example of what supporting local talent does, because she is sharing a unique story that she developed in Hamilton and is right now touring Canada with it. I mean, that's, I think, an absolute testament as to what our local artists can and should be doing. She's also a huge advocate for kids and for diverse voices in the theatre and storytelling and making sure that, you know, we have a chance to strengthen our identity. So absolutely, you know, I absolutely adore her. Tracy Slough and Catherine Chidji, both writers, both based at Swakatah Uni at the moment. Tracy's sort of poet and short stories, Catherine is a novelist. She's had The Book of Guilt, Pet and The Axeman's Carnival all come out in the last, I think, three years. She's absolutely, you know, knocking it out of the park, enormous North Spandans. I do recommend, if you get a chance, go to Poppy's and get a copy of each, you know, all of their books. Local poets, Issa May, Darnapiri, Darden Rowl, Ime Corkery, Mark Crisco. I also want to get Norman Franca, he's a, he's a good, he's a good sort who, and all of these people are also, you know, they're publishing nationally and internationally. I think that's also incredible. Visual artists, I also want to note here, Vincent Nielsen and Tyler Armstrong. They're fantastic, and, but otherwise, the best thing you can do is go to the end-of-course exhibits for places like Wintec and Waikatah Uni, and go see some of the new artists who are doing incredible, really interesting things. And you can usually buy their art as well, so I've got a few pieces at home, like, this is something I really love, it's different. We have a really, really interesting creative scene, and I think it's, it's being underserved, but I do encourage you to support it.
Okay, what's the next box number? Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight. Oh, it gets, was it Road to Combe out of the way? Okay, we've got C for Charlie. How would you bring the concept of, was it, was it Koutaki Tanga, moving forward together into your role if elected?
Honoring toteteri, that's got to be where it starts. Ensuring that Iwi and hapu have a voice at the decision-making table. The decision about Maori wards will be an interesting one, that will affect us a full cycle away. So it's obviously not going to have an immediate impact, but making sure that we have diverse voices at the table. Because we don't want a uniform, homogenous council, we don't want diverse voices like those with disabilities, or queer voices, or young voices, or senior voices to be neglected. So I think they all need to be coming together, our strength absolutely is now a diversity. That also means we need to be working with the idea of consensus and unity. And I do like this quote, "It's, it's not that we have to agree, but we do have to decide." And that's, I think, what it comes down to in terms of real leadership at a council level. Because there are a lot of different people who live here, we've got a lot of interesting needs and wants and demands, and when they're all heard, we have a stronger city.
Okay, the next box number?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Are you going to get me to do all of them?
We could try. Might have to be a bit quicker on the time, but yeah, we can try and make that a challenge. We've got D for Delta. How should candidates counter disinformation spread during local body elections?
Countering disinformation. I mean, another word for disinformation, of course, is lies, that's effectively what they are. It's someone misrepresenting the facts, either willingly or unwillingly. And I think if it's unwillingly, someone's been misinformed. I mean, I think that's, that's what that comes down to. And so that needs to be treated with empathy, particularly if they've had the wool pulled over their eyes. And I think it's a conversation that says, "Look, you know, you may have heard this or believed this, let's go back to the original source, let's see what the actual facts say, let's have a conversation." If they're willingly spreading misinformation, then that's, I mean, it's a very sort of unhonourable, dishonest kind of behaviour, and I think that needs to be, I think acting without integrity is the broader issue there, which we should absolutely be questioning. We have to stand up for the truth collectively, and we all have to know how to call out, we also have to know how to spot misinformation, and do it respectfully. What you have said is not... What, what you have said is not correct. Let's have a conversation about that. Otherwise, we don't really have a democracy if we can't get some stable ground on facts. Certainly it's not if we want to decide collectively on the future of the city.
Okay, the next box number. Oh, yes, good old driver's licence age. Which is really going to sit there and show the age of people for, was it now?
Make your bingo caller yet.
It's all right. We've got W for whisky. Since I haven't found the local equivalent. Oh, no, no, we do have a local equivalent, Waikato. Yeah. Do you support increasing the number of wheelchair accessible bus stops?
Yes. That's relatively straightforward. I think we've covered some of those points so far. Yeah, absolutely. It's basic stuff.
Okay, what's the next box number? Okay, we got Q for Cubic. Since I do know that we're in a Taiwui area, so I think I can't quite use Queen. So I think Cubic is the safe one for Niki Alfabet. How do you feel about Hamilton's sister city relationships?
I have them written down here and I'm going to struggle to pronounce a couple of them. So you'll have to, my apologies. In USA, we have Sacramento. In Belgium, we have Yipper. I believe it's I-E-P-E-R. We do have, I think it's, I'm struggling to read my handwriting here to be honest, Satiana, Satyama. There's also Chengdu and Wuxi in China, five sister cities. Chengju, sorry, Chengdu, C-H-E-N-G-D-U. Why not? You know, go on a holiday? Say again? The, the design, sister city relationships are designed to foster sort of, you know, exchange and knowledge and, and potentially a bit of education, a bit of tourism. I think they're lovely. They need to be assessed, I guess, on their value or what they're actually going to do to benefit the city. And those relationships are good and important, but I think if we're looking at, yeah, I sort of, I'm sort of ambivalent about them. I don't, I don't really mind them. I think they're good. I think the sister cities are fine and full of good noble people. The relationship should be, I guess, active and transparent is the note that I've left for myself here, which is, you know, yeah, why not? But they shouldn't, we shouldn't necessarily be funding overseas trips for our councillors when there are other pressing financial strains going on, unless there is a long-term benefit financially, lifetime value, that's what it comes down to. It's a tricky question. It's, it's a, it's not fluff.
I, I remember this is in Wellington. I had to have the chief minister of the ACT explain to me what the role was. Because he said, well, it's kind of, because I was swearing in for the, for the Wellington City Council after last local body elections. And Greg O'Connor comes up to me and goes, oh, Sam, I'd like to introduce you to everybody. Oh, okay, who are you? Hit the Australian accent. He goes, I'm the chief minister of the ACT. What the hell is that? And he goes, it's kind of a combined of the premier and the mayor. So, oh, okay.
Get an autograph, get a photo.
Yeah, it was really weird. It's like, you know, you have, Greg O'Connor introduced me to this one person that I probably, yeah, I could say I've been an Australian politician, but that was like one of the, and it was a sister city arrangement. And this was the first time that, was it? The, was it? Chief Minister went to swearing in of the new mayor of Wellington. Yeah. So, you know, that, that might be something that happens, is you might have the mayor from the sister cities come in to see the new mayor again this morning. Because there's going to be a new mayor at the end of the year after the selection, regardless of what happens.
Exactly. I mean, you know, hey, a chance to make some friends, build some connections, you know, why not? Why not?
Yeah, we might take, that might be the first Australian place we take to, might be Canberra. What's the next box number? Oh, yes, the voting age. Always try to make sure that they're somewhat G-rated, because you never know, kids could, kids could end up watching this at a later date. So we've got Y for yellow. How can Hamilton retain skilled graduates from local tertiary institutions rather than losing them elsewhere?
I mean, I, I've seen this for 20 years, particularly with the creative sector, because people will, they'll complete their degrees, take Waikato Uni, Wintec, and they'll go, great, I'm going to go to Auckland or Wellington. And I'm going to, because the job opportunities are there, particularly in the creative sector. And I think it's an enormous, I can't blame them from doing so. But I do feel like it's an enormous disservice because we, we have this huge potential here. But we have to give them reasons to want to stay and it's, it's a multi, multi-layered approach. Because obviously it's not just the creative people, because we do need a wraparound creative strategy that actually goes, look, you know, you stay, you know, you want to stay here, you want to be part of the storytelling here, you want to be part of the creative scene. But across any sector, I think this more broadly comes down to a quality of life matter. Do we feel like this is a city that we can work and live and raise a family? Do we feel like there are opportunities here? Do we feel safe? Do we feel welcome? So that to me comes back to things like investment in our communities, investments in our public spaces, making sure that there are business opportunities. We could do things like look at internships, partnering between businesses, the institutions and the council to say, great, here's a pipeline that will get you into working in the council or working at local businesses. So you can bring that knowledge back into the community that helped raise you. Make them, you know, help them see the opportunities that are here for us, because there are opportunities. And they say, we, we lose out on some wonderful people when they feel like other cities have better opportunities for them, that we can make here.
Okay, what's the next box number? I mean, I'd love to keep talking on that one, but we want to try and get first some decent questions. Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. Can't say much about that age. Trying to go twenty-seven, because I was twenty-five when I first started my business. Okay, we've got G for golf. What are your views on the current, on the government's current plan to bring, to create an independent arbiter for Code of Conduct complaints?
We did touch on this with one of the earlier questions and I, I do support the idea of an arbiter because it helps maintain a sense of justice and accountability. Because, as I say, we, we should expect the best from our councillors that have been elected to a high privileged position. And they are civil servants and we, we should expect as much of them as we do from police or firefighters or, as I say, anyone really in, in, in the public eye. And I think when we hold them to account, we raise the standards for everyone.
Okay, and what's the next box number? Oh, yes, the good old age when car insurance excess drops.
There we go.
Oh, yes, yes, I know. That was an annoying one, having to hold out from, I got my four as quick as I could. They dropped $500 off the excess, but I had to wait until I turned 25 before the age and post-excess dropped off. Okay, we've got L for Lima. What role should council play in supporting the local creative sector?
I mean, again, we've, we've touched on this. I'll, I'll look at our set by, at my notes here that I've added in case there's anything that's down on. Oh, yeah. The Waikato contributes $1 billion to the GDP, which is a colossal amount of money. It's, it's around, if I'm, if I remember correctly, the arts and culture sector, the arts and creativity sector, I think, contributes 17 and a half billion dollars nationally, which is more than retail, which I think absolutely staggering. But it's also, having been there in the arts sector, it is undervalued. There's a sense of scraping by, there's a sense of being separate from the rest of the communities in a strange way. People who go to theatre are in theatre. People who, who are in music, you know, they tend to have the same audiences going back in. So it's sort of opening that up, I think. It's being treated as a nice-to-have, not part of the economic engine. And, and I think that we're suffering for it. So council needs to be supporting the flex groups, investing in cultural spaces, helping our artists develop their skills. And, and that wider support that says that there's a broad strategic direction that people can go in, that, that it feels like people go from Wintec and then they're going, great, you've completed your degree, you've done a show. And where would you like your art to be displayed? Because we've got these opportunities, these spaces, whether they're parks or shop windows. We've got space. We need to be valuing our artists.
What's the next box number?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
With this question being a question before that university, a lot of people that are excelling in different, in keeping them in the white coat. Do you think there should be a link between the business development sector and the university? And a lot of our skilled people that are in the creative sector? In a way that developing business plans for people in that sector to give them ideas on what's relevant rather than pull wool and throw a pool and, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I absolutely agree. One of the things that artists often struggle with is the very, very unsexy business stuff. And it's at the very basic level, it's how do you price your art? And it goes more broadly to, and I've been on both sides of this, hey, a group of friends want to put on an art piece or a show. You know, we need to knuckle down and make up basically a business plan for it. And it's, and it seems antithetical to making art. You sort of just want to pursue it, you want to do it. This is adjacent to some of the work that I do in terms of helping people write their own books is that, you know, look, the ideas are great, but we need a business plan to make it connect the most effectively with people. Getting business-minded people and artists to work together will be a, an interesting challenge, but both benefit from it. So absolutely, I, I agree. I think we need to be bringing some of those business principles and skills into the arts sector. That isn't always how do you make money from your art. It's a part of it. It's not always. But it's how can we do this in a way that is going to reach the most people most effectively and have a meaningful, long-term impact for the artist. It's a, it's a really interesting question. Really glad. Absolutely. Oh, look, I'd love, absolutely love it if, I could imagine if the city partnered with, you know, artists across, across the spectrum to, you know, it's little things like, let's redesign your menu, let's redesign your signage, let's, let's put some art in the street. We, you know, how can we make this dynamic and interesting and, and really level up the city? I think collaboration is, I like to think that collaboration is the way forward, but putting in those mechanisms to make that happen, yeah, absolutely.
What's the next box number? We can do nine. Or, or if you remembered today, Ewa. It's quite, it's quite interesting when you're in some places, you'd literally have the box numbers given to you today. It's quite, quite interesting how the different areas do different things. Yeah, I got J for Juliet. How could council be more transparent with the public about its decisions and undertakings?
Transparency is the foundation of trust and if we don't have that, we don't have a functioning democracy. One of the things that we can be doing is making the votes made by council publicly accessible. Because right now they're basically buried in notes, so we have to go watch the, the live streams. And we love live streams, obviously. We think they're, they're very, very important. But we need a, you know, a one pager at the end that says, this is the, this is the outcome, so those sorts of things. More meetings, more public meetings. And as we talked about earlier, the idea of going, well, after a public meeting, this was the outcome and these are the decisions that a councillor will take to the table or that the council will make as a result of that. There needs to be more use of social media, particularly for targeting the, the under 40 demographic, because that's where they're getting their information from. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, putting a, a public release on TikTok, but it does mean, it means communicating with people where they are. That's fundamentally it. I'd also like to see sort of tracking of the promises. So if a councillor has supported such and such initiative, to whatever conclusion that arrives, they should be able to say, well, look, we followed this through, it is on track or it is not on track. I supported it, I didn't support it. What was the result? Right now, it tends to reflect unanimously, which is slightly problematic. And also every decision needs to kind of come with a community lens, because if we're making a decision about a, a level access crossing or a pedestrianized, you know, changing the, the shape of a, of a street, we need to know that the community was involved and that they understand both the lifetime costs and the benefits of something, not just the upfront costs, which are a big part of it.
I wonder if the council livestreamed its meetings on TikTok, how quickly would it get shadow banned? Considering we've actually given up. We've given up streaming on TikTok because you just randomly get banned for a week, but you don't get told why?
See, that, that's transparency, right? That's what.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that, that might be a bit interesting. But I do agree with that, that there should be a plain language summary at the end of it, which unfortunately, again, we're in the plain language act.
And that's, see, that's really interesting, because in my mind, the, we, we show leadership when we go above and beyond what the rules say. So that's where it is going. No, absolutely. We are choosing, even though we don't have to, we, we are choosing to make things accessible. And obviously accessibility comes in many forms if you are sight impaired. You need to be able to have an option which meets that need. If you, if a, a plain language document makes it more accessible to the most number of people. But that's, I hope, where the council goes. Not where it's necessarily convenient, but where we need to be going.
Okay, what's the next box number? Twenty-six? God, I, I remember that would be my first year in business. Okay, we got K for Kiri Kiri Yoa. What was the last community event you attended and have you ever helped set one up?
I haven't yet helped set one up. Depending on how you define a community event, because I've organised like arts events that open to the public, but I don't know if we're quite going to count those. On Saturday, I was at the Women's Day of Action at the Rota Tuna Schools. That was fantastic, actually, because we had speakers from ITO, we had speakers from the Tertiary Education Union. We had Margaret Wilson speaking, been fighting tooth and nail for, yeah, for, for employee rights.
Next you're going to be saying Merrill and Wearing turned up.
So who?
Merrill and Wearing.
If only, if only. I think what's been really enjoyable about running, running for councillors, being, being invited to also extra events, like there was a, a Safer Streets biking event at the Meteor, which was, which was lovely to be. And we actually went for a tour up to, up from Meteor to Casabala Lane and back, and to see what the city was doing well and not well about access and transport. And also I was at the migrant resource centre for a refugee experience and that was really enlightening. So I'm trying to get out and about. I'd say I've been very privileged to be invited to lots of these events and I will continue to do so.
Okay, what's the next box number?
It was open.
We send out, so we will send out questions 48 hours before the show. So if there are some curveball or gnarly questions in there, they can do their research. So then they look, so when they're on screen, they go, okay, there's my notes, bang. And that saves a lot of, about 15 seconds of humming and harping. Yeah. Plus also, you know.
I've tried. Yeah, absolutely. I, I will say as well, there's a certain degree of, you get up here and you get a little bit of stage fright and then you sort of, your brain switches off a little bit. So you forget a lot and you go, oh, great.
Yeah.
Oh, so it would have had a.
It's all right. You can watch it online.
And the next.
That's the great part. So while we're doing this, we're also streaming live, so you can watch it online afterwards as well. Uh, yes, that would be correct, but it means the information's available for the voters. It's seven. Yeah, so one, one and four are Hamilton West for today and tomorrow we're Hamilton East and seven o'clock is Meryl Race. Yep. Same venue.
They're all near.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's our Hamilton home, this, this place. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's our Hamilton home, this, this place. Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, yeah. As we say, if we're in Hamilton, we try, we've tried to always be in this venue. Because that, yeah, yeah, yeah. You can thank the Hamilton West by-election for actually setting the whole, how we ended up in this venue. Cause it was only by the Hamilton West by-election, it's like, oh, we'll try and take It's in the Ballot out of Wellington and it worked.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a testament to democracy, as I would think.
Exactly. Yeah. And actually, to be honest, Hamilton does bed jobs for us in Wellington at times. Um. So what's the next box number? Twenty-three. Twenty-three. Okay, we've got Pete for Papa. So press that one, press that button there. Get the chiral to go across on the screen.
I will have to say as well, it's not off, not many opportunities to get full half an hour to answer questions and, uh, in, in such a warm environment. So thank you for, thank you for coming.
Yeah. Uh, should council take a public stance on national or international issues?
Well, I'm, no, no, I mean, that is, that is a, that is an excellent question. I, I have a slightly, I mean, okay. My answer, yes. Here's where I think this is a really challenging question, because ultimately the role of Hamilton City Council is to look after Hamilton. And we have to be, you know, honest that there are certain factors or certain issues that are happening outside of our jurisdiction that we can't directly help with. But we can show solidarity, we can show leadership, and that's the word I keep coming back to, because we should be able to say, well, we know that this issue isn't affecting us directly, or we know that we can't solve this issue alone. But we can stand up and say, this is the right thing to do. And we support, you know, the, the struggles of people on the cross the other side of the world or, um, even downstream of us. Again, you know, say, we, we're, the, I think the river is an excellent metaphor for this, because we're, we only see a small part of it. But we need to be making decisions that affect the people who come after us. Um. And, yeah, it's a tricky one, because as I say, I have an opinion, but I, but the council may not. Um. I do also think as well, I, I, now I may be wrong on this one, but I believe that if a councillor has shown a, um, a preference for an issue beforehand, then they might be excluded from that kind of vote later. Which is interesting, because then it might go to explaining some quiet on big issues. But I may not be right on that one, as I've heard that one.
I agree that is, should the council take a public stance against national ownership?
Well, one of the big, one of the big ones that had been done, and we also, as this organisation, It's in the Ballot Productions, was over the Modern Awards referendum bill. So there were a lot of councils who took positions on that, as, as an example, we did as well. Um. We were not, the only part of the bill we were actually for was the part that changed the law, um, postal voting times. That was the only section we were for on it, because that actually gave us a chance to get more content. That was the only reason why we were for it. Um. And also the fact that Isilma Post couldn't guarantee delivering all the letters within six days as previous elections. So that was the, that was a hidden easter egg in that bill. Um. I do know that we, as an organisation, we, we've, we've currently got a select committee hearing, which I've actually got to respond to. Um, on the electoral amendment bill, which is one to get with a same day enrollment, which is going to be interesting. But it's also got some hidden fish teeth in there. One of the things it's dealing with is by-elections and what's dealt with if someone dies or not. That's also been tidied up in that bill. Once you find out.
Yeah, so the, uh, the headline is always different to the, uh, to what's buried in somewhere in the unpetite paragraph. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I mean, they used to put a plain language summary at the top of the bills, but, but they've kind of stopped doing that more recently, which is annoying. But they literally, that's where you can find these little, the better details. Yeah. So what's the next box number?
Uh. Eleven.
Eleven.
It's my birthday. Not for a few months yet.
It's all right. It's always a good date to have.
I'm eleven as well.
No, go on then.
See, most, most of, uh, what, most of my family are in the twenties. It's always, always fun on that one. So we've got T for Tango. How do you weigh up the needs of car commuters versus those who use buses, bikes or walking when deciding on infrastructure changes?
For me, this is a question about choice as to how we get around. Uh, I like biking. I quite like taking the bus. Uh, I enjoy walking. Um. I don't, I don't love driving, but I like to be able to drive. And, and if I'm, again, taking my grandmother to town, a private car is really important. We are a growing city and we can't just rely on cars in order to get around. So I am really excited to see the infrastructure investment in bike lanes and, you know, the, the raised platforms for buses and, um, and shared pathways that people can use safely together. Um. To me, it's about investing in a choice for people, how they move around. Fundamentally, the car infrastructure is there. So negotiating some of that, uh, to be more bike friendly or scooter friendly is really important. One point that I do like to make is that the, for instance, the cycle lane budget is five percent of the transport budget. Which, you know, could be rounded away, you wouldn't necessarily notice it. But when you have more cycle, you have less pollution, you have fewer cars on the road, which means more traffic, which means that your roads last longer, which means people get to their destination sooner. Um. I, I support multi-modal transport, um, because it means that we have the option.
I've got a cheeky supplementary to that.
Oh, yes, please.
What do you think about, and I do know in Hamilton, there's a war against inline bus stops. What do you think about them when it comes to a dual carriageway, as in two lanes each way? Or if the in-line bus stop is in a bus lane, which I'm not sure how, how many bus lanes Hamilton's got. In Wellington, we've got a lot of them, but in Hamilton, I think there, there's considerably less kilometres worth. But what do you think about an inline bus stop that's in a bus lane or on a dual carriageway? I understand, you know, versus say a single carriageway.
Oh, right. Um. No, I don't think we do. I'd say the closest I think is, um, Anglesey Street is probably the most, uh, and down, um, Bridge Street towards, um, towards the bridge. Um, I was gonna say towards the Meteor, but you know, I don't, I don't want to name check them too often. The, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I would support them, I think. I think the, the contentiousness around the in-line bus stops, particularly there's one on, um, outside the Woolworths, Bridge Street Woolworths, which has been reviled for stopping traffic, um, for uh, particularly at a, a, quite an awkward spot. And, and it sounds like the council is, um, stepping back on implementing more of those for that reason, it's just been so deeply unpopular. The reason it was put in place was so that buses could merge into traffic more safely. And I think the figure is it adds about three to five seconds per passenger, so of people waiting. Um. The broader problem is that people, we don't have to let buses merge. But if they had, people had to let them merge, then that would eliminate that rule. I think for a dual carriageway, I mean, yeah, absolutely. It's just, it just sounds like an accessibility thing. Um. It does also sound like, yeah, that, that we're probably not going to have any more single in-line bus stops going ahead, unless they're exceptionally well placed. But I, I suspect they're, they're done.
Yeah. And also the other one is that, that, um, wasn't the better, when, uh, the better for people with wheelchairs and that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
The one that I always find quite interesting is the number of people who go, let's get rid of the inline bus stop. So the bus is like that.
Hmm.
And, and so the bus has got its ass pegged in the road, might as well be an inline bus stop, it's still having the same fad. But the person in the wheelchair can't get into the bus because they can't put out the rip because it's half into the year.
Th- this is it, right? Is that when you, again, when you talk to people with accessibility issues, they, they think they're absolutely brilliant. You go, eh, well, for sure, we're protecting people who, who are among the most vulnerable and they need this support. And this is like absolutely top tick, tick, tick. And then you have this extraordinary push from the other side where people find them so problematic. And I would defer that answer to the experts on accessibility, actually.
It's about, it's about answer. Okay, what's the next box number?
Gosh. Um. Nine?
Nine? Uh, no, we just, we already did that.
There you go.
Okay, we've got E for, oh, actually, no, we can use up here, the East Coast Main Truck Line. Well, that's, that's one I tend to use in the Bay of Phoenix. But yes, we can do it because East Coast Main Truck Line starts at Frankton, Yorkshire. What are your views on political party involvement in local body politics?
The good thing is that they provide resources, generally speaking, to candidates. And if you run on a party ticket, you know, you get a bit of brand recognition and that, that's all good. However, there is a real risk that the decisions made by a councillor or candidate or, or anyone really, um, is putting the brand of the party ahead of the actual local decision-making. Um. We all will have voted in the most recent election. We would have all voted for our parties and our candidates. Um. Most of the people who are running, I say, some of my colleagues, um, most of the people who are running, are running independently because they want to be judged on their values and on their conscience. And that's why I voted for the party I voted for. I didn't vote for them because they're there, the party, because they aligned with what I believed. Um. We should be making decisions and casting votes, not along party lines. Um.
I was gonna say, that needs to be said to, uh, said to one of the councils, the Wellington City Council. Uh, I have heard, um, I'm not a hundred percent quoting on, um, I've heard that Rebecca Matthews was one who tried to whip her Labour Party colleagues to vote the way she thought was best, which wasn't necessarily the way the rest of the Labour Party councillors wanted to vote.
Interesting, interesting.
Yeah.
They're trying to do it right throughout the whole country.
Yeah, so that, that, yeah, yeah. That was something that I have, I have heard, and this is something I can confirm from It's in the Ballot. Uh, in the case of, um, I'm not sure about Labour, but in the case of the Greens, if you have an event conflict, your party event takes place over a community event. Such as if you have a Green Party lead campaign and an It's in the Ballot show. As example, the Green Party campaign takes priority over the It's in the Ballot show, as an example, or the Community Resonance Association. And I think that could be similar amongst the other political parties as well. Not sure where X sits on that one, because we've only had one X candidate appear on It's in the Ballot this election.
As I, I mean, you know, again, in terms of democratically, you know, I support if people want to run with their, with their party ticket, it's absolutely fine. But I think ultimately the, the decisions for Hamilton City need to be made by Hamilton City. Um.
The O, O of Office says you put the community before the party.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Um.
There's actually a law. Funny thing.
Funny thing, right? It was, that, what's good then is that they, you know, we do have laws in place because if people are feeling like they need to toe the party line, it, it becomes frustrating. Again, though, I kind of get it from a branding perspective. Like I get, oh, obviously I'm going to vote for X, Y, Z party candidate because that's the shorthand, they, you know, they align it. But, um, no, I think it's, I think it's less helpful and a distraction from actually dealing with the issues that we face.
Yeah. Okay, we, we'll do one more box question. We'll get to the heart of it. What's the next box?
Would, would you like to select one?
Oh, okay.
Pressure's on.
I'm trying to think, uh, we could, uh, go for twitting, the old drinking age, or Rurutoko Ma. Uh, was it? Rur- Rurutoko, Rurutoko. God, trying to remember all, all the thumb hearts of how to make our todayo work. Okay, we've got A, A B for the All Blacks. What are your thoughts on regional amalgamation and the idea of renaming Hamilton City of Waikato?
Two-part question. Yeah. I mean, the, the answer sort of no is very easy. Um. The, the idea of a super council has been floated for decades and it never really stuck because the various communities sort of went, well, we're going to be lost in this, we're not going to be, um, represented the way that we want to be. Um. I agree with amalgamating services. So for instance, we don't need to be doubling up on, as an example, um, uh, rubbish, you know, if we can have one service that takes care of all of them, just happen to happen in different cities, I think that's a, a good way of saving money. Um. We want local voices.
As I say, one sort of treatment plant might be, might be a good advantage.
There we go.
As an example.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Cause that's always something in there. Cause I know in Poi Rua, they've been operating on expired conceit for about ten years because they hadn't got the money to bring it up to code.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It's.
Yeah. And I mean, also like, a, and also a chunk of Wellington ironically pays into that sort of treatment plant because Taowa, even that the part of Wellington, the sewage flows to Poi Rua, because that's where the pipes go.
I think there's, uh, it sort of reflects there that there's been a, a chronic underfunding, um, that's happened across the country for, for decades. Um. The Auditor General's, General's Report twenty twenty-three said that, uh, councils were investing on average seventy-four to eighty-nine cents for every dollar of asset depreciation. The corollary of that is that something that costs a dollar today will cost, I think, a dollar twelve next year. And so the cost of maintaining them is going up and the, the funding is going down. And this is why we're in the really unenviable position we are now. Uh. But I also will say, you know, there's some absolutely creditable work going on in terms of, um, the new wastewater treatment plant that's going into, um, to service the, uh, sorry, the big poo tanks, I think they're referred to in shorthand. Um. Regarding the renaming Hamilton the City of Waikato or, or, yeah, sort of it.
I mean, Kiri Kiri Rolla sounds a bit better.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a better reflection of our past, I think. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And so. Absolutely, absolutely. Um, I think, I, I, yeah, well, yeah, famously, I think. Um. But I think, yeah, I think not a priority in terms of re-regional amalgamation or renaming, I think. Focus on some slightly more urgent and pressing issues.
Okay, so now let's get ready for parting questions. Okay, let's get on to parting question number one. And here we are. What are your views on the new emergency management bill?
Can you tell me a little bit more about this one? Because as I understand it, there's an emergency management bill that was floated under Labour and then stalled under the current government.
It might be the current version that's been looked at, been floated through, through the House.
Okay, right.
This one, this one has, um, the person who has, uh, done the questions has put that one in there as Deputy Mayor of Ahakau in Sails. So, yeah, yeah, she's helped, it's good. She helps with a lot of questions and she's also lead us to the trailer.
Oh, bless. Um, I, so if I, if I understand the bill correctly, I think there's good provisions there in terms of new procedures, because we do need to update how we respond to emergencies. I think the last one was done in or late nineties, I want to say. Um. So, and we will face more extreme weather events, we will absolutely see more um, challenges going ahead and particularly as a result of climate change. So we need to be having a, a, a new model that responds to that. However, it does feel a little top-down at the moment. It does feel like more is being asked, but the money isn't being allocated to do anything with it. Um. I do like how it's protecting more, more vulnerable people. There are, say, provisions looking into there. Um. It does also devolve some, no, I'm going to withhold that one. I'm, uh, I would like to see more detail on the bill.
Okay, and now we'll do the, um, we'll go to Matthews' question on that one as well.
Go.
Having taken a quick look at the emergency management bill, um, and having worked for organisations that are involved in civil defence, I think a number of the decisions that have been made and the changes are quite positive, particularly clarifying the role of, um, the various roles that are in control of different parts of the process. So in general, I support it. But it particularly raises a point around greater involvement of Iwi and Marai. And while I'm generally support, I'm incredibly supportive. And while I'm generally support, I'm incredibly supportive of that because they do play an important role in civil defence. It can't, councils need to stop neglecting the relationship with local Iwi because we can't just go, hey, it's an emergency, we need you to be involved. It needs to be a positive, um, engaged relationship when it's just day-to-day business as usual. So that when emergencies do happen, there's already that pre-established, um, relationship. So I think it offers some great opportunities, but it also offers, um, a number of responsibilities that councils need to pick up and do better.
Okay, let's get on to hardening question number two. Uh, this is gonna be, it's always gonna be a lot of fun. And I do need to sort out this camera because it does feel like we're, one camera's dump, uh, has dropped into the last century. Okay, currently, new housing subdivisions are not required to make housing accessible to the front door for disabled users, uh, disabled users such as wheelchairs. What is your policy stance on making new subdivisions have accessible requirements such as wheelchair users can get to the front door?
Pro? I mean, they, again, we've, we've touched on this earlier, but, uh, we're treating it as a compliance issue, not a design issue. We're, we're choosing to make our city suit some access needs, but not all access needs. And again, you know, this sort of decision is the difference of being able to take someone in a wheelchair to your new home. I mean, that's a big, you know, e- even if you don't yourself have the accessibility issue now, being able to go, please come into my home. Um, absolutely. And I, I suppose there's probably a concern there about whether that's going to raise developer costs. Um, but what are we doing this for if not for our people?
Have a flat section, it barely changes, it, it's, there's no cost difference. Yeah, there's no cost difference between putting a step that stops a person being there or making it level all the way to the front door. There's no change in that cost. Yeah, no, that, that's something Tony has actually gone through because at the moment, he can't, he's in this housing subdivision. He's the only accessible housing subdivision because it was custom built.
Yeah, and so that's, that's the issue, right? It's that, it's why should it be treated as custom? It should be standard, you know, it should, it should be.
Well, it's standard to the front door.
You will.
Yeah, to the front door, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's get, uh, Matthews one, yeah, just go here.
Okay. I'm really supportive of a greater requirement for subdivisions to be accessible. Um, a great quote that I heard recently is that it shouldn't be framed as the disabled community and the non-disabled. It should be the disabled and the non-yet disabled. Because if we live long enough, all of us at some point will be disabled and those sorts of factors should be, um, part of how we make decisions. So that if someone does become disabled later in life, there's already, uh, certainly an accessibility built into their house that they don't have to move at a time that would be quite, um, confronting for some people.
And probably sit through and bang smack meets that one because often with people with disability, when you are disabled, how ea, it's not exactly easy to move. Yeah, 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 that's definitely something on that one. Okay, let's get to hardening question number three. What is your position on retaining Hamilton City's councils, Kiri Kiri Rawa, Maori Ward and the Waikato Regional Council? Uh, was it Ma Taiki Uto, Maori constituency? And why do you hold that position?
I support retaining Maori wards. I think it is such an important part about our decision-making processes, diversity, as we've talked about. Uh, I think as well, now, the numbers that I've heard, excuse me, the numbers that I've heard is that there were, prior to the Maori wards, there were four Maori elected councillors throughout the entire history of the city. So, so underrepresentation is a, is a real issue. Um. We need to make sure that the, that we are getting people at the table who bring us a different worldview, who bring us, uh, a history and a connection to the land that, that as myself, as a Pakiha, I have a very different experience, um, of. It's, to me, it's sort of foundational to representative democracy, to, to borrow one of Matthews', um, terms that we do have Maori wards.
Okay, and let's make that one work.
Okay. I've already voted to keep the Maori wards in Hamilton. And until we have a natural, um, representation for minority groups, particularly our treaty partners, I strongly believe that the Maori wards, both at regional and city council levels, are a powerful tool to make sure that, um, those views are represented in decision-making spaces.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for that one. Uh, let's get on to closing statements of why the Hamilton West voters should give you their number one tick, uh, not, uh, their number one vote. God, I was gonna say tick, there you go. I'm back in the STV territory.
It was, yeah, it's a shame because, you know, I've, uh, I've put my hat into the merrily as well. I thought two ticks Taylor is pretty good. Um. We've talked a lot about, about a lot of issues. Um, I hope it's clear that in terms of both the, my, my past is in the city, my future is in the city. I want the best ideas, I want the best people to bring their ideas to the table and make sure that the city works for everyone. Um, we all have a duty of care to make the right decisions, to elect a council that we are proud of. Uh, and I would like to be a part of that, um, and continue fighting for equity and justice and accessibility and having a city that we're absolutely proud to call our own and that we can be the envy of the country with how we lead. So, yeah, vote number one for Dave Taylor West Ward.
Okay, oh, no, that's one more. Now we'll get over to Matthew's one.
My name's Matthew Bebridge and I'm running for Hamilton West. I want Hamilton to be a city that works for those at all stages of their life, um, be that children exploring the world for the first time, teenagers finding their place in it, um, or workers looking for somewhere to relax after work, or families raising children and finally retirees in the golden years of their lives. Um, a city that's inclusive, both in a physical sense and in the sense of the structures that help create the decision-making spaces is going to help us, um, create a city that is going to work for all of those people. And one of those tools that are available is the participatory deliberative democracy tools that I'm very keen to see implemented better. Matthew Bebridge for Hamilton West.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, mate. Um, that's it. Thank you, Dave, for coming in person to the It's in the Ballot Show.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for organising.
No problem. Thank you to our audience for participating. It's ma, it's been a very interactive, um, show.
I appreciate it.
So we'll be back for Hamilton West, um, Ward Part Two and hopefully between now and then I have fixed this camera because the camera is clear from when it leaves the camera, but we think cable might be, uh, might need to be pulled out and put back in. So that will be my task between now and four o'clock. So we'll sit there and do that and everyone have a good afternoon and we'll see you back at four.